I feel like we all have the wrong link lol. There we go.
I was gonna say if a council member has the wrong link, yikes.
Could you imagine? Oh wait, what's happening here? Oh haha. Oh no. Oh gosh, hold on.
Okay, we're live. Is everyone ready? Welcome to the April twenty seventh, twenty twenty one city council meeting. Make your roll call please.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan, you are zooming from where for the record?
Yep, I am zooming in from Hazel Park, Michigan, Oakland County.
Thank you. I need approval of the agendas presented, revised one.
We want approval of the revised agenda.
Support.
Motion passes. It's all up to civic announcements. Anyone have any civic announcements, please come up? Anyone on Facebook? Or Zoom, however you wanna play. I see Charlie Cavell, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you Mayor, Council, everybody. I'm Charlie Cavell, our county commissioner. I just wanted to give a quick COVID update and before I do, I wanted to give a a hearty thanks to all of you who attended our local government ARP, so COVID two point oh money convening that we had folks from the county government come, listen and learn from all of you that showed up from Hazel Park that are local leaders. So thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Thank you, Ed, the city manager, for making time. Thank you, everyone else, for bringing in your comments and thoughts. So the other city commissioners appreciate you. Also, so to give you the COVID breakdown of where we are, we've had eight point five million doses of vaccine delivered to Michigan. There have been nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand doses delivered to Oakland County, and that's through two systems. One is all the hospitals, and then one is Oak Gov. Through Oak Gov., there have been two hundred and eighty-nine thousand doses delivered in shots and arms to people. So what that means is fifty-two percent of all people in Oakland County, sixteen and up, have received at least their first dose, and seventy-five point seven percent of all people in Oakland County, sixty-five and up, have received at least their first dose. And just to give you kind of the cadence of how the vaccinations have been going, in December, we received in Oakland County one thousand nine hundred and fifty doses, and this past week, we received twenty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty doses. So we're, we're really doing it, everybody. I'm also excited to hear about the interest that folks here on the council have had about our anti-source-of-income discrimination series of resolutions, and hopefully, if everything works out in the upcoming county commission meetings, we'll be able to help with code enforcement from a county level and help Hazel Park landlords be able to get up to code so that there can be less source-of-income discrimination in all of our communities. So happy to take questions about any number of things or just sign off and listen to y'all talk about budget sessions. So excited.
Thank you, Charlie. We appreciate that very much. It takes us to anybody else for civic announcements? City council have civic announcements?
Mayor, we're planning a park cleanup in conjunction with the Mile Boulevard Association on May fifteenth, so save the date, additional time and information for time.
Any other comments? Civic announcements open to public discussion. Anyone for the public to speak? Anyone wishes to speak on Zoom? Raise your hands. Maybe raise your hand.
Somebody had raised their hand, but I don't see it still raised.
Once, twice. A closed, closed discussion. Will be considered agenda one to nine?
Mayor Webb, sorry, Mayor, Mayor Webb, there's a, a person on Zoom that has their hand raised again.
Just give me a moment, let me finish this. Discussion to the, to the discussion. Passes. Okay, who is the person that raised their hand on Zoom? Let him speak.
Hello?
Yes.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and City Council of Hazel Park. My name is Lisa Franklin, and I head an organization for people with disabilities called Warriors on Wheels of Metropolitan Detroit. And I'm here tonight because I just left a protest for Armani Sharp. Armani Sharp is a nineteen-year-old young man with autism that's being charged in Hazel Park and Ferndale for a crime that he did not commit. There has not been a fair investigation on the accusation that two women placed upon him last year, and we're asking for justice for Armani. We want the charges dropped. Armani is autistic. His counselor advised him to take a walk every day, and he was walking across a field in Ferndale, and these two women didn't think he should have been there. Why? He had every right to be there. He lives in Hazel Park. He and his mom have been residents of Hazel, Hazel Park for over four years. And so he had every right to walk. It was right there on the border of Ferndale and Hazel Park. So the two women who accused him of what they accused him of spoke out to him because they didn't think he should have been where he was, walking down the street. And everything that's going on in this country right now is just unjust. This young man may be tried and go to jail for something that he did not do and not even understanding the charges. He graduated from high school. He has aspirations, and he has a bright future ahead of him despite his challenges. So we're asking you to drop the charges on Armani Sharp and allow him justice because he's being accused of something that he did not do. That's not even characteristic of a person on the autism spectrum. So please look into this case and see fit justice by Armani and drop the charges. I'm here on his behalf and the family's behalf. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you very much. It takes us back to the agenda. Administrative reports. Approved upgrades to cable vision system.
Uh yes, just mayor, members of council, we have a proposal for you to approve upgrades to our cable system. As many as know, as you previously speak about this, our cable system is somewhat antiquated. Some of our equipment dates back to nineteen eighty-two. Nineteen eighty-two is a good year. I don't even know if Luke was born in nineteen eighty-two. It's a long time ago for a cable system, and obviously, our cable TV system has been down and non-functional the past, I don't know, really a year. So for a lot of residents, that is their main source of information for civic events and things like that. So again, most of these funds will come from Cable TV Access Funds, which is what they're intended for. So requesting that council approval.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the upgrades to the cable vision system.
Support.
Discussion?
Um, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate all of the work put into going forward with this update. I had a nice discussion with Ed this afternoon about this, and I know there was a lot of behind the scenes to bring this, you know, quick kind of provision to us, but I really think this is a great investment, and with the amount of residents we have in the city that utilize this cable vision system, I think that it is really important for us to update it, and I appreciate all the work done on this. So thanks.
Thank you. Any more questions? True ordinance and bylaws established in the Befication Commission, first reading.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this was drafted at the request of Councilmember McCall. To check the minutes, we ran through and found the minutes from the city of Hazel Park dating way back to May thirteenth, two thousand and three, when there was a motion to change the name of the Befication Committee to the neighborhood Richmond. So now we are going to establish our own Befication Committee. Is that your intent, Councilmember McCall? Amanda Mason is here, and Councilmember McCall is here to answer any questions that she may have.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the ordinance and bylaws establishing the Befication Commission, first reading.
Support. The discussion? The one discussion? The discussion? In boards and commissions? New business? I got one thing I wanna add to new business. Probably you need to take a vote on whether or not we can have a Memorial Day Fair. The Stewing family has been asking us if we can get a notification of that. I think we need to take a vote and, and make a decision on that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think, and, and you're certainly more than welcome to do that, but I think I have a strong sense of
Yeah, and I understand. I just want to Make a motion?
I would decline if the stewardess requests a whole day fair and to the park on Memorial Day.
Support. Need some discussion, discussion?
I'd actually just like to point out, as a Hazel Park resident and a newer resident, I appreciate the fair. I love the fair and something I look forward to, and since I became a member of council, there is a focus and an emphasis on the fair and all of the events and activations that are part of it. I don't make this motion lightly, however, I think it would be heart-sighted if we didn't recognize the current cases in the state of Michigan and the difficulty of executing an event that will be consumption of alcohol and people in close proximity without the negative consequences on the safety of the public should be paramount, the reason that I made this motion.
I'd also like to mention that we are in discussions of doing so, an alternative.
Um, I also wanted to echo those comments. As a member of the Planning Commission for the Hazel Park Art Fair, there are some significant limitations, and I feel that, well, I would love to bring this event back to our community this year. I am concerned with the ability to do so, this type of event safely for our residents, and I am, I'm sad about that, but I'm also, I really wanna make sure that we are keeping our residents as safe as possible and making sure that they get the fair that they expect and the fair that they want and not one that disappoints them, so.
And I'd like to say that the Stewing family has been helping with our community for a long time, and they did come up with a good operating plan of the litigation strategies for the COVID nineteen. And I commend them for that. It was a very nice plan. And aside on the side of caution with the pace of rising and the death rates, maybe looking out for our community is the biggest concern of us, is conflict. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, and again, I, I thank you all for your kind comments. The spirit of the carnival, they've been outstanding to work with. They've been an outstanding ride package to the city of Hazel Park. But I did express to him the concerns we would have. This is, you know, this was a kind of a big switch out of the blue when we had very clearly planned for a different issue due to the situation with COVID nineteen. So I would inform them of that, and I would also inform them that we're looking forward to next year to a great carnival and if we can bring something later in the fall when the situation changes or something like that.
Would you please pass on that we really, really noticed the operation plan and the litigation strategies?
Yes, and, and they were, they were well thought out, I would say, at the carnival. It's just even if there was no pandemic, it's tough for us, it's tough for us to switch gears. That is, makes them not happen.
Thank you, sir. Uh, this is budget session, budget study session. I, I see Chris, would you please?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's that time of the year again where the city of Hazel Park is in the process of preparing a budget for your approval. We have Lacy here today to give you an update on this process. I'm gonna thank Lacy for all her hard work on this budget. She's done a great job for us as finance director. And I'm gonna go over to her.
Welcome.
I wore a t-shirt today just with some breath, and the portion of resolutions included, it was a summary, so we can include it. But these are, of course, considering in the funds that I still need to work on when I give her a bit of information. I want you to be something to look at and to ask questions about. Or?
Again, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I would refer you to the very comprehensive budget analysis and overview that this did for you. And some of the highlights of that budget analysis are, the city continues to run a tight budget as it has for the past several years. In fact, the city of Hazel Park has run on a tight budget actually for the past thirty-five or forty. So she references the importance of understanding the heavy rollback and the heavy interaction with the closed lay and how that places our revenues in a vice. So what everybody needs to understand at home is when the values go up from our existing tax base, we're not getting any more money for that because the heavy administrative, the heavy amendment case, what does the amendment say? The heavy amendment says you cannot get more from your existing tax base than from the budget. And when our property values grow, most properties settle down cap. Each one of those uncapping as revenue that requires us, which is our tax rates, a very small amount. Result of that is you have two people living in the exact same house. One person's, you buy or buy, their taxes double. Isn't that increased the Hazel Park of nothing other than the rate of inflation? So it's important that everyone knows and understands that when I talk about the nature of Michigan's broken system of municipal finance, that's one of the prime components of this toxic mess that is the empty property interaction. So most people don't understand that. We see that time and time again when we deal with policymakers that there is this lack of understanding in terms of how it works. The only way that we can grow our tax base each year over and above the rate of inflation is to attract new construction to the city of Hazel Park. We've been very successful in doing that, but again, we're somewhat constrained because we've been listed as fully built out since the, this happens. So most of the development that we're doing is redevelopment or spoting, building housing. And again, we've been very successful with that, hope to continue to be successful. It's had a positive impact on our budget, but nowhere near the positive impact that some folks might see when they look at rising property values, and they don't understand that a lot of those values are capped artificially low because of the property value crash of two thousand and eight. That crash, we lost over fifty percent of the city of Hazel Park's tax value in the whole city. So again, remember, once you lose it a hundred percent of the loss, which can only regrow those tax revenues at five percent of the rate of inflation, whatever is possible. So incrementally, each year, the past five to seven years, we've been improving our property tax, but it is a slow slog, and we are nowhere near generating the same amount of revenue from a bill that we did prior to the property value crash in two thousand and nine, and the past eight, the tax that we had about five or six years after that. So when I say broken, I mean that it is just about a broken mess as we come up with this worst system of municipal finance amongst the entire fifty states. So that's the environment in which we have to operate. Lacy, I will answer any questions that you have, but provided you with some background information via email from some of the stuff that we did when I was on the, the treasurer's task force on this financial form, none of which was adopted by the legislature at that time, and some, some information that our council from U H Y have come up with in terms of ideas for municipal finance. So Lacy, is there anything that you wanna add to that?
This year is gonna be point nine seven four eight. So for example, the average mileage here wants two point two eight six eight. This year it's two point two three one four. So anybody staying in a house, we're gonna see a new village.
Mayor, I have several questions to go on, don't worry. Uh, so I might be looking at the, the budget report that you filed last week, starting with estimated revenues. And there's, twenty to twenty-one, was that about three point eight million? Out of twenty-one, twenty-two, it's spotted for about four point one five. Do you attribute that to new home sales, I assume, from an aggressive home buying season this year?
I'm sorry, you're looking at three point seven, which is three point four?
I'm looking at the three point seven nine for the twenty, twenty-one minute budget, and then the requested budget is four point one five, and that strikes me as more than five percent, so it's curious to what you would be attributing that to.
That would be the new, new sales in Ashikap. Hang on. Can I do it? You, you have a grant for them, and it's
Uh, medical marijuana licenses, from about four hundred and forty thousand to eight hundred and fifty thousand. I assume that because we have new applicants and new licenses. Uh, for other federal grants, I know that we got about one point one thus far this year, and twenty-one to twenty-two, we have zero. I assume we're gonna be getting additional granting, but that we don't have clarity at this time on how much or when.
So if I write up that, if I use well, there is the, the new one that has asked, I'm waiting for timing for final amounts. We think it's around eight hundred? Eight hundred or so that we think we're getting, but um, I haven't heard final. I'm hoping by the May thirty-first, and then we, we we have to press the final budget. I don't have those numbers. That's another reason why it's not a balanced budget at this time. Yes, we have no, I have no solid indication of a month.
I thought that they had already decided those a month?
We don't know how they're gonna come, or in what package, or how they're going to be dispersed, or what the restrictions are gonna be. Are you, are you talking about the, uh, the ARP? So the, the amount on that, if you've been told by his office, is one point six. But again, some of those things, that there are restrictions on this. This is free money that we can use for anything. They're very defined in terms of how we can utilize the files. And we're just telling you guys to make sure that we, our recommendation is gonna be very wise spending pattern with them to prepare us for whatever may happen. Again, like I said, it's not three dollars.
I said just before I said this out last week, I do have the one that we, in a few weeks.
And there are significant losses in certain areas such as the next year, maybe dollars. That will, because that is one of the uses of dollars.
Uh, second page for major street maintenance and local street maintenance. I noticed that we vastly underspent this last year, but still aren't anticipating a hundred and seventy for major street, two hundred for local street, and then three hundred for water and sewer. Uh, could you explain why we underspent if we realized any savings from council and that line?
No, they're actually, these are monthly allocations, so I need the information from other departments. So three hundred thousand for water and sewer. That's just a one-time entry that I'll do in June. So the numbers will be up a little bit higher. I don't have, this has been a full all the way through April. Like I just posted one today from February. So there, this is probably only, you know, five or six months worth, so it'll
Yeah, it's, most likely by the time we're done, it will not be under.
And then some of that, especially the, the major and local streets, you get, it gets heavier in the spring, so you won't see a jump up. I still tend to
What about the grant that we received? Or?
Yeah, and again, that's not, I don't know if we've got that necessarily in this budget. We have a match. We have capital improvement funds that we can use that for. Obviously, we defer that grant for a little bit of time due to the fact that I seventy-five is under construction. We're having a bit of traffic issue. There is a part of that. But we do have sufficient revenues to cover that and to make that as primary grant funded. There is a mash from up, I don't remember off the top of my head how much it is. Oh, we can cover that.
Do you know how long you can get for that?
I think. Uh, I can get you that information tomorrow.
Okay.
They were active, yes. And for us, we can't, again, we can't do it anyways. Now you have the the I seventy-five construction, but we've got all the repairs that power is making to their lines, which is causing us you know, once again, we won't construct on John R., so you know, we're required to put everything back where that they are, but we can't do these improvements while we're doing that.
Age of eight. Uh, building code enforcement. I noticed that the wage is permanent, has about a forty percent increase. You talk me through that?
There is items, you know, obviously, the standard reason, and we have another full-time
Got it. And then I have one more. Well, uh, which would be under the Recreation Department, Building Maintenance. It looks like twenty to twenty-one, we're about thirty-five thousand dollars greater than we had anticipated. I assume that because of the improvements to the rec center as well as to bike and motor.
Correct. It would be, the ice cream is a different fund. It's primarily the floors of which we're receiving. Do you have the offsetting grant up higher?
Right, you will have offsetting revenues from the CARES Act. We got that through Oakland County. So that was primarily funded through them, so you have corresponding revenues, you know, we may exceed the line right initially.
I have one question I wanna bring up. And we've all talked about nerves and how we're gonna look at how we're gonna do funding. Try to control how we go forward in the state of Michigan as issue of third week. But I'm sure you can come up with a plan to give us in the next six months or so. But, uh, I'm sure you can come up with a plan to give us in the next six months or so. So we can better strategize.
Well, we have some other plan. Uh, it's, it's a plan that we, we have all discussed in the past. We are earmarking the revenues from marijuana to cover, uh, legacy such as pension contributions and other post retirement benefits, specifically retiring our insurance. Now, no one who comes to work for the city of Hazel Park since two thousand and six is eligible for retiree healthcare. They all receive a retiree healthcare savings fund. So, uh, for those other folks who are receiving healthcare, who took steps this year to change their healthcare agreement in line with, uh, type of coverage that our active employees have to modernize it. So there is a saving where they will realize plus there is some additional revenue obviously that will be realized from, uh, the marijuana industry that's come to Hazel Park. It's important to remember that you have very little control over, uh, those pension costs. They're established by the, uh, MERS board directors. I just stood on that. Yeah.
That's why I brought it up to see, like, why did it be out?
Uh, absolutely. Everyone needs to understand that the city of Hazel Park is facing a significant increase in pension contribution cost to MERS. It's not a cost that you get to, sure, you don't get to not pay it. If you fail to pay it, MERS will sue you, you will lose in court and judge will issue a judgment levy on every property owner in the city of Hazel Park who does not contribute sufficiently. So this is, there are many things that you can get away with not paying. Actually, there's not that many things you can get away with not paying. But the one thing you absolutely cannot get away with not paying is the pension benefit. So that is one of the reasons why, uh, the decision was made by this council and this administration to look at, uh, medical marijuana and then recreational marijuana. Make sure that we added revenue source so that we would not have a stock of evidence with additional property.
We could lose some money on ice now for years. But in twenty twenty-four, it will become a profit to the city. And bring a dollar or something helps out for those losses over, again, years of, of, year, thirty years. But it also will help shore up our budgets in other areas.
At ICE, obviously, you know, those of you who know the history of Hazel Park, that ICE arena may be city manager of Hazel Park. It ended with my predecessors', uh, career here. Uh, the ICE arena has been, uh, a burden, uh, to us, but it will be paid off in April of two thousand and one four. And you are correct, that will be the significant source.
Kind of been an Achilles' heel from the beginning, but it's actually working out at this point.
We'll say though that there are seniors that are coming around the house, so it may, may be longer than twenty years.
Right.
I said over a period of years, it has backed into the plus.
Do you should like, would you like with some of your future spend, just to do?
For the ice arena, the roof needs to be done for replacing, um, heaters and, and other items. Like often this year I got hit with a lot of emergency costs in a business. And rarely the roof was, isn't expensive, we've patched it up a few, few times. And then just basic upkeep.
Oh, again, many will have a, or I mean, council, you have when the, the, uh, the smaller ice arena, the floor heaved up from eight feet into the.
The dead.
Some, we, we did.
I'm just asking because maintenance is a paramount to our investment.
None, we, we have had some reduction in personnel costs. Uh, right now, uh, Serene and Amanda pretty much taking over the administration of the ICE arena. Now at the rack center, it was assistance from Larry and Abby, who's been a longtime contract employee there. And we're, we're doing fine right now. We need to hire someone or looking for someone, but because that position is. For Lacy, we're going to have to make some capital improvement investments in there. But, uh, those should be pretty easy on the day when we're done, but, you know, it's fine. But we are having to, if something breaks, we have to fix it. It's not a choice. And if it's, you know, five thousand dollars, it's five thousand, if it's fourteen, it's fourteen. You have to keep the arena running because you need those revenues to pay those bond payments.
A lot of the ice rental bills come back.
So, what, to, to go on, uh, the question about the capital improvements. The departments have, they're on my heads and I couldn't, they, and I'm still trying to tidy it up. But they have all worked hard to come up with capital improvement ideas that they may need in the next few years. You'll see listings through the different departments. There are immediate concerns, some of the, the list items, but something to keep in mind is, you know, if you're looking at the budget and planning for the next few years. Obviously, there's a lot of, we've, we've been making improvements. There's a lot of areas that have been, that are aging that we're, we're going to need to address in a few years.
Has there been any sort of, it's, uh, pre-ice work?
That's what, that's what, yeah, this is the start. We've never had one before, so we're, we're all trying to come up with something that's still.
I just wanted to comment too, um, when we were talking about MERS and the funding of MERS. For anybody that doesn't know what MERS is, it's the municipal employees retirement system. And that is for the entire state of Michigan, just so people are not confused about that funding and why that's required.
We did also include each market very important.
Any other questions for Lacy?
I do, I have a question also, Lacy. Um, I know that the same year, two thousand and six, when we lost, um, almost fifty percent of our revenue. I know that we made some drastic cuts in our employees. Um, the number of our employees, both our fire, our police and our municipal employees. Are we still running at those numbers or have we rehired closer to our numbers pre-two thousand and six?
I'll take that one. Uh, fire has been, uh, mostly rehired thanks to the S M O R S A village that was passed in two thousand and fifteen. Our police department still has, uh, fewer personnel, uh, than we had back in two thousand and two. But, uh, we are currently hiring now and actually our biggest problem with that is actually finding qualified. Very difficult to attract, uh, people who want to be a police officer in this environment. So, uh, we're working very diligently at that, but we are, our staffing members are adequate at this point in time. And, uh, I guess I'm looking forward to, uh, making sure that we can offer competitive, uh, you know, wages and benefits so that we can attract the people. We just hired a, uh, a brand new officer, uh, yesterday, outstanding, highly educated, uh, person. And we're so looking forward to having, uh, work here in Hazel Park.
Well, to add after that a little bit, within the police department, we have, uh, a lot of officers who are close to retirement. So that's a constant concern in the next few years. And I think we have two thoughts, uh, regarding the vacant, like, we're actively looking to hire.
And again, we are, because every time someone retires, it's a big increase for our pension system. We are speaking to some people and offering them a little bit extra money to stick around, uh, beyond their retirement time, if they want to continue to work for us. So, uh, we look forward to, to, you know, retaining people.
Is that doing any good?
Yes.
We have some, yeah.
Keep that actually in check.
We're, we're trying. And with respect to wages, again, most of our contracts are settled, which you're approving across the board for everyone. Uh, union and non-union, uh, you're proving with this budget, a two point two five percent raise.
We're doing this, uh, program with other departments as well?
Uh, primarily police and fire would be the only ones that we consider for, because their pension costs are so high. General employees.
Superintendent of other.
Yeah, the general employees do not have those kinds of high pension costs. And their age requirements are higher and things like that. It's just, and again, these, it's important to remember our two-tiered pension system. So the first contract that I got to negotiate as big manager, because Mike and Andy will remember that I inherited, uh, a contract that Joe Gunn had, uh, had negotiated, that was extremely generous and.
Multipliers.
Basically over generous. I mean, we always want to be paying well, but the net result of that is then the next time we had to come back and we had to cut those multipliers uh, significantly and, uh, spend the number of years that they had to work to get a pension. So there's a formula, that multiplier, uh, the higher the multiplier, the bigger the pension number. So, uh, for a particular class of police officers, especially, to a lesser extent, a particular class of firefighters have a more generous pension multiplier and more generous favorable, uh, final average comp in minimum number of years for than everybody else. So, uh, we still have, uh, some firefighters, I think we have four firefighters in the old system. And we have several police officers.
Any other comments from council, questions?
Um, go ahead.
Just going to ask you about, it's a long-range list. Uh, when you're compiling it, do we, is there a way we can find out if some of these things are there?
Right, a lot of, most of the time, the individual department heads look for grants. I'm assuming, you know, Serene and the department is actively looking. I know all of the department heads look, uh, look for rep grants out of N M R, right? They do, you know, they take a lifetime finding those sort of grants. And I also know the fire departments are actively providing grants.
We, we actively pursue just about every grant that we can get our hands on. Uh, some are not worth pursuing, we pretty much know going long. Uh, we get a lot of grants, Nine Mile, that was almost a dollar grant, uh, fix that that we got from the government. Obviously, New Park, Skull Park, that was from a private foundation for that playground. So we, you know, we work constantly looking and we're constantly checking.
My department has, um, exhaust system to build a, for everything at now, so everybody is trying. That's one way of.
I see the two require.
Yes, again, we're, we're very fortunate that, uh, we're a member of the Michigan Municipal Management Authority for our city's insurance pool. And they're very generous with the grants that they, uh, give us. So like for instance, the certified public manager program, they end up paying for, I think, a year ninety percent of that program for everybody who goes to it. So that's why all of our department heads and some of our council members, uh, are, or will be certified public managers through Saginaw State University because we get that cover.
Can you, can I, can I grab for the camera?
Any other questions?
Um, I have a question, um. Ed and I had spoken this week about, um, the ad valorem taxes. And I was wondering if you might be able to discuss that here, Ed?
Yeah, ad valorem taxes are simply taxes that are taxes on value. And what we have here in Hazel Park is, uh, we were forced to levy additional mills to S M O R S A, which is an ad valorem tax, the general operating mill is an ad valorem tax. And, uh, there's one other millage that is also an ad valorem, our garbage and rubbish tax is an ad valorem. And obviously, our garbage and rubbish tax, uh, would be completely, uh, inadequate to our garbage and rubbish pickup, which is why we have the additional trash pickup fee that we got the levy. So, uh, we're trying to do all that we can, uh, to keep those costs down. We're even subsidizing garbage and rubbish, uh, with the NOVA JAM fee, a little bit with the general fund this year. Because, uh, we don't want to raise anything up for our residents. So, uh, ad valorem taxes fall under that heavily, uh, profit interaction. And so, just like I said before, yeah, you buy a brand, you buy a, a, an older home and the taxes go and, uh, the city of Hazel Park has no net benefit to our budget because at home, that's all. Uh, every other taxpayer gets tiny small, uh, up to their taxes. And that's why our revenues are trapped in a vice. Now, Melissa and I were talking about this, and again, this is something that we, we share an interest in. And, uh, we're also shocked by the fact that, uh, there does not appear to be a great deal of understanding at the state level. It's how their own programs work with respect to taxation. So, uh, we're constantly trying to educate folks about this because it's critically important. There's no way to grow unless you can create new construction. And we've been very aggressive in doing that. But that is not making any new Hazel Park. And there's no unincorporated areas that we can annex around us to add to our, our land area. So we kind of stuck with what we have. We continue to try to be wizards with, uh, uh, growth and development. And I got to thank Jeffrey Campbell for his outstanding help in, uh, you know, really transforming Hazel Park. Uh, and I'm pleased to say that we've, we've done that. But none of those things give rid of those deep challenges. So, ad valorem tax, tax on value, as opposed to a special assessment, which is just not assessment for a specific purpose.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you, Lacy. Next question.
Again, we're, we're here for all of you. Pick up the phone and call us if you have a question. And for those folks who are watching at home, continue to be, we're here for you guys, the taxpayers as well. Pick up the phone and call us if you have a question. There's nothing more frustrating than to go on social media and see a long thread of, uh, you know, I, about taxes that are unfortunately kind of completely disconnected from reality. So, uh, while we'd all love to take a look at those tax bills, any reduction in bills will result in reduction in services, dramatic reduction in services. So, and if you don't make that pension contribution, like I said, that will give judgment levy. And you don't get to vote on that. That's not covered by, uh, heavily in profit. So that's levying upon your community by, or so.
The reason we don't want that is because we'd rather be the masters of our own destiny.
We would rather.
Steer our own ship.
And to that end, Hazel Park was the only city with a taxable value for that. In the range where we were, that was not taken over by the state of Michigan in the rate of the property value crash of, uh, two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine. And that's in large part because our residents, time and time again, had to force us, uh, to help us out with national news and our employees had to force us to take pay cuts and reductions in benefits. Like big pay cuts, sometimes three years in a row, one year ten percent after, uh, a pay cut that they'd already taken. And they were, everyone here was a hero of their own destiny, you made your sacrifices. Now we're seeing, you know, brutal, solid gains, property values, and we're a hot place to develop. And I also want everybody to know that we get inquiries from people who want to come here for businesses all the time. Uh, we expect to have some announcements on a new restaurant soon. Uh, I don't like to make any announcements until I actually have a shovel in the ground. Uh, or until they're opening the doors and we're cutting the ribbon because, you know, we've seen this happen before. Yeah, we're going to be listening and then ever do it. But there's a lot of interest. So, uh, COVID was not the time that anybody was interested in doing anything with restaurants, obviously. So all of that type of development was on hold. Thankfully, we've got some crazy cool things happening over at Action Capital with some new tenants that we're going to be excited to talk about. We've got some amazing things happening with our existing business, is what they got, Exetera. I mean, we had Exetera at our, uh, state of the cities before because we're so excited about what they're doing. And Jeff Campbell and I have known for over a year that they were going to go to Genovale and they were going to clean up the radio activity there. We couldn't say anything about it because it was, uh, it was a big hush-hush secret. Well, it's been released, uh, this week. And they're over there and they're cleaning up the radioactive material. And empirical evidence is showing what they're doing is actually working. So, uh, this is who we are, this is Hazel Park, we're sitting in the world, what problem is that? So, uh, how proud, I'm so proud of that company, I can't describe. And, uh, we've got some, uh, other new companies that are going to be amazing and helping us.
Well, I'll close our budget session. Any comments from department heads, anyone from the department's want to talk? All right, crap, uh, communications from the city, any more? Let's see, may I adjourn for comments?
Other than the fact that I've already said, you should be insisting this finance be open like eighteen times. Uh, I say that every week because it's still true every week. There is, uh, one important announcement that, uh, I got to make in that. Saturday, May eighth, I think it's, uh, between eleven and two P M. We're having an event called Four Bruce. And what this event is, the event to raise money for pancreatic cancer. Pancreatic cancer, this, that is growing exponentially. And unfortunately, when most people get diagnosed with this disease, it's already at stage four because there are very few symptoms until the disease has, uh, uh, overtaken, uh, the poor person's body. So, Melissa Schwartz, uh, husband. So Melissa Schwartz, uh husband Bruce Schwartz, uh fought a value battle against this horrible killer uh a couple of years ago and it was heartbreaking for us all here at City Hall to watch him go through that and to watch Melissa go through that. And uh again, I don't believe there's any problem that we as human beings, who put our minds to it, cannot overcome. And I believe there is a cure for pancreatic cancer, cure for all cancer out there. We just have to work hard, put the resources into it and new science and the medical engineering necessary to bring this cure to fruition. And one of the ways we do that is by raising money. So I would hope that people will show up uh on Saturday, May eighth, from eleven to two at Hazel Park High School and raise money for Bruce and for every other poor individual that affected for this horrible disease. So that we can make some real progress in treatment, hopefully with a cure. Melissa, do you want to say anything else?
I just wanted to say thank you to uh City Hazel Park Administration Council that has been there unwavering support um for my husband Bruce and myself. And I would like to thank the Hazel Park School District, um Dr. Coopie and um her administration and Jared and Linda, uh Jared, Dejose and Wendy Yorah. I would like to thank everyone, including Chuck, who listened endlessly as he asked my favorite subject, which is my husband Bruce. So um I hope that everyone will come on out, it's gonna be a walkathon. You can come and sit in a lawn chair. Um we are going to have overflow at Green Acres Park. Um we are hoping to make this, this is the first annual event. I'm excited to share with you um that Cancer Treatment Centers of America, Pancreatic Cancer Action Network, Detroit Chapter and the National Chapter have both provided the materials for our event. And uh we're gonna be there with the support of each other um to provide information as to genetic testing and information. And if people don't know that there's genetic testing, which can be free screening. And um there's a lot of information that's gonna be there. So the website is ForBruce, F O R B R U C E dot org, or Bruce dot org. You go there, you'll see my beautiful husband and uh information, and I hope that you'll uh come and help us. Right now, there's a twenty-five million dollar uh initiative that we're trying to do to pay them, which has been credit cancer action network. This is for research and development of a pre-screening or early detection test. As of now, there is none, zero, hard to believe in twenty twenty-one. So together, we can do this and I thank everyone from the bottom of my heart and on behalf of my husband as well, thank you very much.
People that I know personally who've been diagnosed with this disease in the past uh few weeks. It's heartbreaking. So uh again, I encourage everyone to please uh reach in your pockets and donate a little bit. Whatever you can donate is fantastic and please show up to support Melissa uh on the third floor.
Recitations from uh. What's a person's soul?
Um I just want to thank everybody that um put in the hard work to bring forward this overview and study session. Um I know that there is a lot of confusion about um budgeting and how it works and how our taxes work. And I am a big um tax, property tax nerd. Um Mike McFaul can attest to the conversations I've had with him and the animation that I get when I get excited about talking about taxes. Um not because I enjoy them, not because I enjoy paying them, but I enjoy understanding them and I really enjoy communicating how they work to residents and friends and neighbors because it is important. Um I want to uh absolutely thank uh Lacey for all of her work on this year round, not just now, but also putting together um this pamphlet for us and answering our questions and presenting to us. And um I also wanted to thank the city for um our MOU with Common Ground that's coming forth. Um I think that we are really making some great progress in our city with um some social programs and they're coming to us at no charge. And I really think that that is something that um benefits our community on multiple levels. But I really just appreciate all the hard work that's being done for all of these social services that combined with our standard city services really make our community better, safer and more accessible for members of our community. Um I want to remind people, as uh Ed Klobuchar said, May fifteenth, we are going to do a park cleanup. There will be more information coming about that, um but it's going to be Eight Mile Boulevard and um city park cleanup in conjunction with Eight Mile Boulevard Association. And um I just want to tell everybody, keep washing your hands, keep wearing your masks, stay safe, um get vaccinated.
Anything else you want to make call?
Thank you. Uh I would like to thank Lacey as well, thanks for all your hard work. Um I would like to remind everybody that um a lot of our businesses are still functioning at a percentage of business. So if you could please continue to order uh curbside pickup or takeout or any of the delivery services, that would be great. Um it is nicer outside, so a lot of them have outdoor seating and patios. Uh and so please, please continue to go and uh spend money on our businesses, they'll keep the doors up. Um and speaking of it being nicer outside and not still north of there, but there's a lot of mini bikes riding around in the neighborhoods. Um please be very careful, uh please watch out for kids on regular bicycles. Uh even the kids on mini bikes need to watch out for kids on bicycles. Cause I don't see them stopping at stop signs oftentimes, so uh everybody, please be safe. The weather's getting nicer, there's more kids out. Just please, go now, thank you.
What's my one?
What, uh Hazel Park, uh I did want to, I probably also sentiments and uh thank Lacey. Uh our book of ordinance is, is sort of the brain of the city, uh but the budget is our heart. The budget is first and foremost a policy document that reflects the priorities, desires and beliefs of council and residents. And I believe that our budget reflects a progressive, forward-thinking council that recognizes that we need to continue tightening our belt indefinitely. Uh with the understanding that our best days are ahead. And then I also do want to acknowledge what Mike said, please get out and support our businesses in this budget document. You can see that we took an absolute bath last year when it comes to the constitutional sales tax and liquor tax. The consequences of the pandemic on our budget are stark and the consequences of COVID on our businesses are equally stark. So please get out and support your local businesses.
What's that? Here.
I do want to thank the department heads and everybody who helped us put these numbers together and make sense of big numbers. We just sometimes don't have any control. You don't have a lot of control over how much comes in from the state and expenditures. Sometimes things come along that are completely unexpected, you have a fire in I seventy-five or a flood. You know, different things happen. So it's a lot of work and it's to keep our heads above water, what we've done, exceeding the well for a long time. All part of the administration, the employees, the residents, the council working there. Those mini bikes, we're all concerned about uh, you know, the main concerns, don't want one of them to get run over. You know, they drive a little crazy, you run a stop sign. Um you get, you don't stand a chance against any kind of a motor vehicle. So that's why we want to be careful out there and watch out for them, the people riding, we need to watch out for themselves. And the Hazel Park Casual Bike Club, it's up and running, we're hoping the rain will hold off tomorrow. Um we meet at seven o'clock behind the high school. And uh we had twenty some people come along, it's a lot of fun, it's usually the casual and we get out usually if we can and support some local businesses. So to that end, uh if you have, if you love somebody, tell them, if you have children, hug them every day, tell them you love them. Appreciate everybody coming out, enjoy the great one.
I just want to say thank you to our staff and the cooperation that takes a group of individuals to pull off the day-to-day operations in our, in our city and to provide the services which our community is needed. And expect for what they pay taxes, they expect good quality service. And our, and our staff does do a quality job providing that service. The DPW, small guy at the bottom, the firefighter all the way to the top of City National Office. And we like to make sure that every resident is represented that way. It's a fair quality treatment and the service in which we try to provide. I also like to say, thank you to everyone, uh thank you, we need to move forward and uh look after each other through the summertime and uh we say. With a mask on, as long as you can anyways, I know it's tough for everybody. We'll try to get through another year of this uh COVID nineteen. Maybe a motion to adjourn. To board, thank you very much.